I'll meet and ask Councilman Watson to lead us in the third police.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call Rose.
Councilman Poole.
Here.
Councilman Cotton.
Here.
Councilman Liddles. Councilman Watson.
Here.
Councilman Barton.
Here.
Mayor Lovelace.
Here.
We have a quorum for business, sir.
Approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
I make a motion.
Go ahead.
Is that a motion by Councilman Poole and a second by Councilman Cotton? Okay. We have a motion by Councilman Poole to approve the minutes from the last meeting, seconded by Councilman Cotton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
Motion passes and the minutes from the previous meeting are approved.
I'd like to welcome our visitors here today. We're certainly glad you're here and joining us. Approval of the agenda.
Mayor, the council has a copy of the agenda and there's a copy on the wall for the audience. There's one amendment that I know of that needs to be added and that is item Elf One, Elf One, Jam Productions of Mobile LLC requesting use of Obannon Park. So that will be Elf One, Jam Productions of Mobile LLC requesting use of Obannon Park. Are there any other changes that need to be made to the agenda? Hearing none, all those who would like to approve of the agenda as amended, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say no. The agenda is approved as amended.
And the old business is none and the new business is approval of accounts payable.
I'll promote for accounts payable for the month of August.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Watson to approve accounts payable, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and the accounts payable are approved. Mayor, there's a plan to be able to extend the taxiway at the Bruton Municipal Airport and there's actually grant funding that will make this available. This is a simple resolution that will approve of the grant being applied for. Usually the matching funds that the city has produced are five percent or ten percent, depending on what the state can cover. I'm understanding the state may actually be able to make good for their five percent this year. And this is a resolution that approves not only for us to provide the matching funds for the grant to be submitted on behalf of the city, but also authorizes the mayor to be the one to sign the appropriate documents where this grant is concerned. To be able to transact this business, it's just a simple resolution.
See how much will the percent of the city be? I'm looking if I don't see it up there.
Matching funds for the city are typically five percent, maybe ten percent, depends on what the state, state's broke, depends on what the state comes through with. If they come through with what they ordinarily do, and I'm getting at least glimmers of hope or snippets of word that they may be able to cover their five percent, our part will be five percent, ten percent at worst.
I make a motion to approve resolution number one five dash zero eight one oh.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Cotton to approve resolution number fifteen dash zero eight one zero, zero eight one zero, seconded by Councilman Watson. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and resolution number fifteen dash zero eight one zero is approved. The airplane in front of the Bruton Municipal Airport is a T thirty-four C Mentor aircraft. It's owned long to the city of Bruton by the Naval Aviation Museum out of Pensacola. Our contract for having that has expired and is set for us to renew that contract and contracts are renewal, renewable for five years. So in order for us to be able to sign the paperwork to renew the contract, this needs to be brought before the city council to see what your thoughts are on it. To be able to renew the contract would be a simple resolution.
I make a motion we approve resolution fifteen oh eight one oh.
Dash one, is that okay, dash one, okay.
Sure.
Motion by Councilman Poole to approve resolution number fifteen dash zero eight one zero dash one, seconded by Councilman Cotton. Is there any discussion?
Steve, what is the amount?
It didn't cost us anything.
Didn't cost anything, okay.
Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yes.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and resolution number fifteen dash zero eight one zero dash one is approved. We've received notification that the recreational trails program, also known as RTP, is a federal grant program that provides funds to organizations that want to acquire land or develop and/or develop trails. Goodman Mills and Cablewood has discovered this grant program and they have the appropriate documents and paperwork to submit on our behalf to secure grant funds. The city of Bruton would be eligible for a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to extend a trail at Jennings Park by some six hundred sixty feet. The city's matching responsibility to this grant would be eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. If the council so desires for this grant to be applied for and pledges the amount of city's matching funds, this could be taken care of in the form of this resolution.
Mayor, you might know, Steve, would it be in addition to the one they would join it to, Obannon Park, could be something sort of different area?
It would be Jennings Park and it would be the extension more toward the creek, etc. I guess south.
I'll promote motion to approve resolution number fifteen zero eight one zero dash two.
A second.
Motion by Councilman Watson to approve resolution number fifteen dash zero eight one zero dash two, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and resolution number fifteen dash zero eight one zero dash two is approved. We've received notification from the ABC Board that an application by Swain Sandwich Shop has been submitted for a retail beer license on or off premises and a table wine license on or off premises. In order to follow through this process legally, if the council deems fit, this would need to be published in a newspaper twice and that would be on August the twelfth and August the nineteenth. And then a public hearing regarding this matter could be held in the council chambers on September the eighth. Now that's a little bit different time, we moved that meeting up in September, but would be on September the eighth. Public hearing on this matter could be held to determine whether or not to recommend that this, these licenses be granted to them. This can take place in the form of a resolution if the council sees fit to act on it.
Make a motion.
Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve resolution fifteen dash zero eight one zero dash three.
Second.
You got a question, I have a second.
Motion by Councilman Barton to approve resolution number fifteen dash zero eight one zero dash three, seconded by Councilman Cotton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes, resolution number fifteen dash zero eight one zero dash three is approved and the appropriate publication will occur in the Bruton standard on August the twelfth and August the nineteenth and a public hearing will be held in the council chambers on September the eighth.
Next item is Jennings Park, I think everyone's aware, we've had a situation where we've had problems with some boards that were rotted. I think that boardwalk was put in some five or six years ago. Over time, we found that in, that there was, there's not any warranty, so to speak, on commercial use of treated wood. But Skies and Guff Lumber Company and Swift Supply have been gracious enough to work with the city on this and have offered to, they have already replaced all of the rotted wood we know of and they've spent already about fifteen thousand five hundred. And they're going to retain the surface of brown painting and there's a special paint that we're going to put on the boardwalk that not only addresses any problems with future wood that might rot, but we have had issues in the past during the winter months that that wood been somewhat slippery and this, this paint should solve that problem also. So there, we're going to spend another thirty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars to, to paint that. Koppers, K-O-P-P-E-R-S, also will have a limited warranty, limited to the wood itself should we have any further rotting of that wood in the future. So I recommend to the council we approve that settlement.
I make that motion?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Watson to approve the Jennings Park Boardwalk Settlement Terms, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and the Jennings Park Boardwalk Settlement Terms are approved and will be duly noted in the city's minutes. Item Elf One is Jam Productions of Mobile LLC requesting use of Obannon Park for a wash hole jam event on the dates of September third through sixth. So I submit that to you as a request from Jam Productions that you grant approval for them to use the Obannon Park area for a wash hole jam event, which is musical event, and they're requesting use of the park for the dates of September three through six.
Make a motion to approve, I'm sorry.
Got a question though.
Alright.
I got it ready. So when they, they go use the park for a three day, they responsible cleaning up the whole nine yards, I'm assuming you're right, they know about this?
They surely will know about it, yes.
Okay, okay.
Councilman Barton, your motion still stand good?
Yes, yes.
I'll do second this, Steve.
Motion by Councilman Barton to grant use of Obannon Park for a wash hole jam event on September three through six, seconded by Councilman Watson. Is there any discussion?
Yes, we have three through six, but what are the hours beginning to start or beginning to finish?
I can't, I do not know the exact hours. The event, I believe, is going to be September five, if I'm correct on that. Three through six is needed for setup, preparation, et cetera, and six would be for tear down, take down, cleanup. The actual event itself will be the fifth. So I would say starting, starting at sunrise, daybreak on the third and ending at sunset on the sixth would cover it adequately.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Councilman Poole.
Yes.
Councilman Cotton.
Yeah.
Councilman Watson.
Yes.
Councilman Barton.
Yes.
The motion passes and permission to use Obannon Park for a wash hole jam event September three through six is so granted to Jam Productions of Mobile LLC.
Next item is the introduction of the city's fiscal year two thousand sixteen annual budget. I'm city clerk.
Being clerk for eight months, I can tell you that this has been the biggest amount that I've got to climb and I know it's a very important mountain. After eight months, after wrestling with the budget, I know more about the city than I did, may know more about it than I want to know. I know now. Basically, the clerk's office is going to be the net that everything the funnel has to channel through. So the best, good thing that has been put forth to put this budget together, an approach that has been taken in putting the budget together is input and contributions have been requested from the department heads. My conviction, not just assumption, but my conviction is that the department heads know more about their departments than I, therefore they ought to have some input in how their budgets are put together. Having said that, we go to the introductory slide for the city of Bruton fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget. And you see two categories, you see the main category there is going to be projected revenue and then we get down to the expenditures. Then a three-year study and analysis of the revenue from the city of Bruton brought in pertaining to taxes, business licenses, court fines, fees, forfeits and various other fees that are collected in the course of the year. And I determined quite clearly that the most recent year was the highest of the three years I've studied and putting together this general revenue projected figure. But I have optimism that the next year is even going to be more than this year. But my nature is to be rather conservative in my estimate, so trying to pick a middle of the road figure, which I believe would be accurate, solidly based, soundly funded, and that general revenue projected number for fiscal year two thousand fifteen sixteen is six million five hundred ninety-four thousand seventy-eight dollars. The other funds you see there, sewer, sanitation, gas and airport, these are what we call enterprise funds. They generate money in and of themselves to cover the expenditures that there are various areas. So if we put together those projected numbers from the enterprise funds and the general revenue fund, we anticipate a total of twenty-seven billion two hundred seventeen thousand nine hundred eighteen dollars to become an empty city. The budget that you'll see as we go over it slide by slide will cover twenty-six million nine hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred seventy-three dollars. We are going to tweak it a little bit because of some desires, the council wants to see it, it will make a difference there, two hundred thirty-six thousand one hundred eight dollars. Now I read that George Bush, when he became president of the United States of America, looked at the first budget that was put forth under his regime and he said, well, looks like a budget to me, there are a lot of numbers there. And this is going to be the busiest slide that you're going to see that I'll show you today. And let me say that a budget's not just a piggy bank that you butcher to get the bacon out of it, it's a method for methodically managing the money. And when you have that many numbers up there, so a lot of managing has to occur. The attempt or the approach that was put forth with this budget was to take the actual totals from two thousand thirteen and fourteen. We're in two thousand fifteen's budget cycle, but we don't have total numbers yet because the fiscal year's not over. So we took the, the total numbers of fiscal year budget two thousand fourteen, what actual expenditures were for those years. So we put those together. The second column, we have fiscal year two thousand sixteen, what this new budget is. And then we calculated the difference between what this budget calls for as compared to what was actually spent in fiscal year budget two thousand fourteen. But for comparison purposes, we also put a column here for fiscal year two thousand fifteen, so you would see what last year's or what this current year's budget is, see how it compares to two thousand sixteen. And we did an analysis over the far column to show whether there would be an increase or a decrease from respective departments. You see the bottom right there is a pretty large number showing the decrease for this year. That all has to do with the cost of gas and the cities sell the gas there, but it's all relative and balances out. First, the park, we call it the city clerk's office and that's general government, this first ones. These are going to be quite comparable to what the last year's budget numbers were, with the exception of two significant categories, and that's going to be on the next page. You see that next year is an election year, so we have to budget that number for municipal elections. Then we also put in the number right here for the next move industrial development group that was approved by the council at last meeting. This contract, the next move industrial development group will commence on October the first, that's the start of the fiscal year. So you have those numbers quite comparable to what they been, but with a couple of significant changes because of those areas, the municipal election and next move industrial development. The next slide is program management and it's almost identical to what this previous year's was. You'll notice there that there is a grant, a federal grant, FMPP grant, that's been received by the city that helps to defray, offset and cover most of the choo-choo farmers' market expenses. The police department will show a bottom line increase for this year over last year. One of the main reasons is to get our salaries and wages lines in line with what actual expenditures have been. There were some concessions or some decreases suggested by the police department and there were some requests for funding increases. There is a desire in this line to be able to put to work people that are in jail because of municipal violations and there's a line item put there to accommodate that. A grant will be provided for the city to improve or update necessary can program they have working. Animal control has been in fluctuation over the last few years. The city had it, it went to the humane society, the city has it back. So we put a slide in, page in for the budget this year, our best guess, estimate and projection of what's going to be required to run it and manage it for this year. So after we have a full year under our belt, we'll have a whole lot better idea of exactly what the precise figures should be for a year's worth of animal control budget. Fire department, you'll see the numbers that are represented there. Trying to accurately get all things in line there. On the second page of the fire department budget, there will be a line that will be put right there for necessary fire department equipment, air packs, et cetera, while they are functional and operational currently. Need modernizing and updating and there's some equipment the fire department will need, so we're going to add a line item to it right there.
I think that's what, five thousand?
Uh, forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand for the fire department. Great, forty thousand.
Of the works department, you see there's a big difference between the actual fourteen and what the budget will require here. We had to make a few adjustments to get the salary line in line, but also to more accurately reflect some new employees that are in the public works department and maybe who've not been there before. That department has a secretary, beyond my understanding how public works director functioned or operated without a secretary, but there's a secretary now with public works department as well as a couple of additional street workers. Their salaries are included in that line to be able to more accurately reflect what the actual expenditures will be. On the second page of the public works department budget, you'll see that there are some items here with zeros, especially the one starting with tractor leaves, caterpillar, bathtow, bobcat, F two fifty payment. These are equipment items that have been approved by the council and a line item in the budget needed to be provided so that accounting purposes can be accurately served. Municipal library budget is exactly the same this year as it was for two thousand fifteen fiscal year budget, a little bit more than what the actual expenditures were, but I did a study over what their current status was in various departments and projected that amount to the end of the fiscal year. And these numbers here would accurately reflect or would be needed to accurately reflect what the expenditures for the year going to turn out to be.
And we added, what, a five thousand dollar equipment line there?
Yes, a five thousand dollar equipment line will be added. Community development, I'm no longer in community development, I'm in the city clerk's office, so we made a little bit of adjustment there. We shared some of the workload, spread it around and actually that position, that office remains open with the work is being done. City clerk, I gave it where the head of city clerk, but also community development department director. I maintain supervisory authority there and the employees were satisfied at the beginning of the work, a matter of fact, better than satisfied, but now I'm very proud of the employees in community development. But once those adjustments and tweaks were made, it would show a decrease in actual revenue that would be spent or actual expenditures for community development in this budget. Information technology, that's our IT department. You see a line item there of money that's allowed by the school system to cover some of the work that we do in videoing and broadcasting, school events that would range from concerts, recitals to football games, et cetera. There is a grant that's planned for them to be able to produce or construct a centralized location for a server room. Really, that's a critical project, we need to do it before IT for this year, put our server and our lines, et cetera, in one secured equipment room so that there'll be a whole lot more safe, whole lot more sound and things will stay together much more efficiently than ever. But the total there would be showing a decrease a little bit in what IT budget would be for the year. Municipal court. When I was with community development, some of the folk were paid for the community development budget, some of them were paid for municipal court budget. Now we try to straighten all this out and our judge, our prosecutor, our public defender, our magistrates, all that, et cetera, are going to be shelled exclusively through municipal court, nobody's being paid from community development now. So whereas there's a decrease in one department shows an overall increase here, but I can say that court receipts do cover what municipal court expenditures are, so we're covering where that regard is concerned. Community recreation, peruse that at your convenience. I will say that this line item here will be ten thousand dollars, that's a change that was made from a previous meeting, but we're going to include that. I can say that the youth football program is having record numbers of participation again, so we've had to increase that from fourteen thousand to fifteen five. We're liable to fall playing football. You can look those numbers up. City parks numbers stayed relatively the same. If you lived in the city of Bruton, you would have had to enter the same to not notice the work and emphasis that's been put on various parks around the city. Traffic department remains the same, these are, about some monies that would be required of us to pay for the various line items that are indicated there. Cemetery numbers, we just had to tweak the salary and wage line to get it in line with actual expenditures and it adequately reflect the cost of living adjustments that have been put in through recent years, but other than that, the expenditures will be quite comparable to what they've been. And most everybody can say that we have a city cemetery of which we be proud. Sewer operation fund is an enterprise fund, that, that means you get your sewer bill and you have to send money into the city and all that's put together, it's an enterprise fund, it raises its own money and covers its own expenses. Sanitation fund is similar, I will just highlight here that the trash service is no longer an outgoing expense for the city, the city has purchased its own trash truck, we have our own people do it and we're really hoping that the community will be far more greatly pleased with the service that's provided through the city doing it now. And it's an enterprise fund as well, it generates its own money to cover its own expenditures. Gas department is an enterprise fund. Gas department is an enterprise fund. There are a lot of line items to the gas department's budget. It's very critical that the city maintain a good, healthy, functioning gas department. And you'll see the numbers that are here. We scroll on to the next page, there are a lot of obligations, responsibilities there, and we need the gas department to be fully functional and profitably functional. See the purchase of natural gas there, it's not the gas is sold less and selling less from the city, or that the city has sold less, city sold the same volume essentially, it's just the cost of gas has gone down. So that would attribute to that big number there ultimately bottoming out right there, but the profit margin remains strong. Municipal airport dispersments, these are dispersments that are covered by money the airport brings in, whether it's the money that the United States Navy pays for any area, or whether it's for grants that are received, and the city council voting on a resolution today to apply for a grant to cover for the addition of a taxiway out on the Bruton Municipal Airport grounds. So you see those numbers, and they're pretty much covered by the money the airport generates. Employee health benefits, city has been very fortunate over the last couple of years that we've not had a rate hike where our hospital insurance is concerned with Blue Cross Blue Shield. Should that change, this number does factor in an approximate ten percent rate increase, but we certainly hope next May, whenever we have our meeting with Blue Cross officials again, that the number will stay the same. But if it's not, then we are prepared to deal with that. Fortunately, we've had two years of stability there. Probably in this day and age, hospital, healthcare, medical coverage, not many folk can say that their rates have stayed the same, so we've been very fortunate here in the city with that department. Reserve fund, these these are funds that will be asked for the city council to approve in the event that money is available and the need arises to be able to to cover some of these expenditures. If we go to the next slide, we see reserve fund additions. These are things that would be on a wish list, and essentially, if they're going to be funded, the city council will have to approve them, request will be have to be made in the city council for them to be funded. But these are wish list things, and they will serve as a reminder to us of things we know that we need to do. We know that the playground Rainbow Dragon needs upgrading. We'd like a hundred fifty thousand dollars to pop up to be able to do that. And we know that the fire department's going to need the equipment, well, rather than it being here, it's going to be, this line item's going to be put into the fire department's budget, so that will be covered there. We know that some people applying to the city for grants relative to the historic district. We know we'd like to do lighting up Mildred Street and various other ambitious things we'd like to do in the city. Nonetheless, we're starting out with this page, and this is the page where we end at. We will make those recommended or desired changes if the city council was requested. We'll add those numbers in and tweak these a little bit, for all intents and purposes. This accurately reflects what we anticipate our revenue to be for the next year and what our expenditures will be, and it does show that we'll have a surplus there, and we hope that it will be even better than what our projections are.
I'll ask the City Clerk, are there any announcements?
No, sir.
Comments?
No, sir.
I have one, Mayor. If I may know it, I'd like to make a motion to slag Jones Road in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. That dirt road, Jones Road, off of Motorcade Drive.
Is that a formal motion?
Yes, it is.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Watson to slag Jones Road at an expense not to exceed fifty thousand dollars, seconded by Councilman Barton. Is there any discussion?
Who's going to get a, you going to follow up and get a quote on that, Joe?
Yes, 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 Patty, yes. Not to exceed that amount. Just a dirt road, just to slag it.
Slag it.
Yes, just slag it.
Any other discussion? Councilman Poole?
Yes.
Councilman Cotton?
Yeah.
Councilman Watson?
Yes.
Councilman Barton?
Yes.
The motion passes, and we will get into looking into getting that done, if that a matter.
Any other comments?
Motion with your own.